Let's call this meeting to order of the RMLD Board of Commissioners. The meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being videotaped at the RMLD's office at 2:30 Ash Street in Reading, Mass. This meeting is being videotaped for distribution to the community's television stations in North Reading, Wilmington, and Linfield. I understand tonight we are live on the Reading, in Reading. So, on that, make everybody aware of that. I'll read the RMLD Board of Commissioners Code of Conduct. "The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognize the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board and responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain an order on all public comment and ensuing discussion." Okay, and so take care of the opening remarks. I don't think we need any introductions. We have visitors here tonight from the Finance Committee and from the Selectmen. Okay, and we'll go to public comment. Jason, you want to?
Nothing to add.
Nothing? Okay. Anybody from out there want to public comment? You want to come up? Anybody? Public comment? Okay. Come on up to the microphone so the cable TV people can hear you.
Hi, I'm Barry Berman, 54 Longview Road, and this is only going to take 10 seconds, but I didn't want a meeting to start or to end without me as a ratepayer and also a grateful member of the Board of Selectmen to thank the RMLD for the tireless tremendous work that you did through three storms, I think, and one on the way.
Yep.
So, I have friends who live in Boston, who live on the Cape, who live on the South Shore that still don't have lights. And when they call, nobody answers the phone. So, I know there's a lot of business here that we're going to take care of, but as a grateful public official and as a grateful ratepayer, I didn't want this to go too far down the road without me expressing my personal thanks as a ratepayer who lost lights for a period of time but never really felt unsafe knowing that the RMLD was out there. So, I just want to thank you for a job well done. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Thank you, Barry. Any other public comment? If not, then we'll go to approve the minutes. We have the January 25th of 2018 minutes. Do I hear a motion to accept as presented?
So moved.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Then move to second discussion. No discussion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, that motion carries. I attended the Citizen Advisory Board meeting back in, back on February the 28th. Basically, the things that were discussed, they approved the minutes. There was an update from the General Manager on the LED streetlight program. Wendy presented the financial report. Tom Olia, I hope I pronounced that right, made a presentation on the North Reading substation, Energy Storage Project. And there was just some general discussion on the town, the payment to the town, which is just, you know, a status as to where things were at that point in terms of, you know, it was really discussed, the fact that there would be a meeting going, and that at the next, the next meeting was really, the only thing that was discussed. One of the things that they did request is they actually have set out their meeting schedule from now through the end of December, and they actually requested that we kind of do the same thing. So, it's one thing we should be working on in terms of having a set schedule on that, and that's one thing they did request so that they know in advance. I mean, they actually set meeting dates all the way out through December, the 19th, at this point. So, it's something we should do too, in terms of our, from our end standpoint. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, is that an action item we can?
Yes.
I've been sending emails for a morning.
Right. Right. I mean, should we want to, is it a particular, a particular day, like the third week, like a Thursday of the third week?
Yes, usually it is the third of the day.
Okay. So, when you send out that, it's actually send the dates out on that so people can actually know what date it is on that? Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Very good. Okay. The next item we have is the report from the, on the Subcommittee on the Payment. Now, most of you actually attended that meeting from, well, what I can remember. The only thing that we, the Commission at that point basically made a presentation, we called it really a trial balloon, as we put up at this point, as to where we are, as to what the, what are, we presented at this point. So, I know, but any of the Commissioners have any other comments on that at this point? Nope? Okay.
Well, yes.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, it was something that came, it was presented by a couple of members of the Subcommittee, and there was no vote by the Subcommittee, nor was there one by the full Board. And there's many steps that have to occur, including CAB, but starting with the Subcommittee actually recommending something.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other comments from the Board or anybody? Anybody? Yeah, go ahead. Can you come up to the microphone so we can, we can get?
Hi. Mark Doxer, 110 Beaver Road. I'm wondering if you could just talk through a little bit about what the next steps are that you guys will be taking, what approvals would need to take place. What's the process from here?
Well, the process is the next, the next Subcommittee meeting is next Wednesday. What time is that meeting, Tracy?
5:30.
5:30. So, the next, the next Subcommittee meeting is 5:30 at that point where hopefully we're able to, we should be able to, a lot of exchange ideas among all the different members, I would hope at that point, and see where we go from there at that point, decide the next steps. Looking back, get input from all the different parties, both the CAB, the Selectmen, and the Board at that point, too. Yeah, Dan? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan Ann Smieger, a member of the Board of Selectmen, 6 Oakland Road. I just wanted to follow up and answer Mr. O'Rourke's question a little more completely. Tom, I think you had asked, what's the defined need for this money from the town, effectively his question about what is driving this particular exercise or number?
Yeah, so let me just, to clarify, so people know the background. So, I think what I had asked in words, something like the following, is that, you know, the, there's really two thoughts. One is, do we have an obligation to make an additional pay and then to increase the payment? Then, secondly, if not, what, it's a little more understanding, you know, it's pretty clear, the town, every town needs money, but more, a little more understanding if there's something particular driving it. So, even if there isn't an obligation, and we sort of thought that the White Paper dealt with that piece of it, that if there isn't an obligation, we still, we're all part of Reading, we want to be as helpful and supportive as we can, but understanding what that looks like. And so, it was really, is it an entitlement in the, not in the negative sense, or is it a real financial need that we're trying to address so that would guide our decision-making process?
Thank you. It is a real financial need. Let me go back to the instructional motion that was passed last, in May of 2017. "It struck the Board of Selectmen in light of the town's difficult financial situation to study the RMLD with an objective of increasing annual revenues to the town of Reading." Drawing a little bit more down on that, I believe the intent of town meeting was to get a more, a better predictable, defined stream of money year to year. Just, if, let's say we were to take the 2.4 million and on the basis of that hire police officers and do other things, if the run rate of keeping those officers on the force is less effectively than the run rate we're getting from RMLD, we're going to start falling behind. We're already seeing this happen with state aid. I think our townside run rate is somewhere 3.1%, 3.2% the way we're managing it now. Schools are a bit higher. We're trying to keep that down, but state aid has been a half of that, if that. And in the last, the last few years, the CPI index has been in the low 1% vicinity for the last four years, the index for the payments from RMLD. So, the idea of having a more defined and hopefully increased from that level, annual increase, it's not a specific earmark we're talking about, but that piece of the revenue stream can, can be more reliable, if you will, over, over the years.
Okay.
Does that clarify it a bit?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And may I echo Mr. Berman's sentiments. We've had relatives move down to live with us now for a total of, I think, 10 days over the last three months from North Andover. They have a small baby, too, so they're very grateful, and we are, too, at your many efforts at increasing and enhancing the reliability and redundancy of the system. I mean, we had power losses all around us. We had one flicker. So, somehow you're feeding that power several different ways to my house. Thank you.
It's not based on selectmen seniority.
Well, I can tell you that, you know, my office is in, you know, Alston, and we had just a flicker, and all our computers went out. And we had to redo the server at that point. There is one thing that I do want to mention. Mr. O'Rourke mentioned the White, the White Paper. The White Paper is now up on the website for anybody who would like to read it. In terms of that, the copy of that is on the website at the present time. So, Colleen, you want to?
You would go on the left-hand side under Meetings, and then Board of Commissioners, and then there's a quick link on the left-hand side.
Okay. Very good.
Good.
Great. Okay. Anything else under the Subcommittee? If not, we move on to?
Mr. Chairman, just one, just one thing on this general topic, that when, if there's an increase to Reading, it's also an increase to the other three towns as well, correct?
That is one of the options.
Okay. I mean, because that is one of the complexities of RMLD, is that we do serve four towns. 56% of our sales are in Wilmington. The Wilmington CAB member, George Hooper, is, you know, he sees low electricity rates as a major driver of economic development, as, as do we. So, it's important to balance all these things, that low electricity rates equals economic development in the areas where we would like to see it. So, this is also one of the main objectives of RMLD, is low rates, reliable service, economic development. So, and all the, all the four towns need to be involved in these, in these decisions. So, that's just something we all just need to keep in mind as a high-level concept.
Okay. All right. Very good. Any other comments? If not, then we'll go on to the General Manager's report. Colleen, you're up.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to start with me going over the storm data for the three storms that we've just had.
You want to come up, Amin?
This is the handout I believe we have on the table. Can I? Yeah. Okay. Hi. The first slide shows basically the trend of the outages for all four towns. For the first storm that started, we almost lost 3,000 people, and then we brought them back within less than, than the three hours. This is the second storm, basically March 7th, the second storm. We got over 4,000 calls, and we lost approximately 6,000 customers at one point, and then gradually we brought them back in, to start at 11:00 PM on Wednesday night, and with 6,000 customers being out. And then the next day, we cut it down to 2,500, and then by Friday, we had almost 600 people out, 660 people. And then on Saturday, we started to take care of some of the area outages that, you know, they heavily got damaged, and lots of the tree, lots of tree issues that, you know, well, even we had one incident that the tree was, the, our line was on the opposite side of the tree line. And then the customer tree came down and took, pulled down and brought three others, broke three others, which made extensive damages. And by Saturday, pretty much, we picked up all the area outages, and we had left only 12 customers left. And these are the customers that, you know, well, the service got completely ripped out of the house, and they needed electrician, and we needed the approval of the wire inspectors in order to re-energize for safety reasons. So, pretty much, you know, our crews worked around the clock. We had six foreign crews. We had from communities, from mutual aid that when it was activated on Thursday. We had crews from Merrimack, from Holden, from Sterling, and also Braintree. And we are grateful for the help that they provided for us. They send the crews with the trucks. We also had two contracting crews, pavilion contractors, they were also on the property. So, all in all, we had like eight crews plus augmenting over six crews, that they went around the clock trying to restore services in the safest manner and as quickly as possible to our valued customers. So, all in all, it was a successful operation, and I want to thank the crews, my, my staff for working around the clock trying to bring people back on, and thank you for all the valued customers for being patient. I know it's, nobody wants to see outages. I mean, in my community, you know, in Lexington, the people, they were still out while I was working over here, three days, four days, and they had the shelter open. And we had, for almost 10 days, we had people, 150 people out. So, that's one of the great benefits of having the municipal utility at us, because we're working for you, and we take it very proudly. So, that basically shows the trend. As you see, we picked up lots of customers, that's gone less than 37 hours, the people, everybody pretty much were picked up, and, you know, it was a great operation. So, the next slide shows you the phone calls that, you know, you see that at 8:00 PM on the, on the, on the 8th, we got the first, the first, the first storm. We had 321 calls. On the second day, we got 2,100 on the second storm. We got 2,167 calls, and we got almost, it shows 5,388 calls on this major storm, the second storm. And the third one, we got 317 calls. So, the volume of calls goes up, as you know, we got limited staff, so it was overwhelming. And I know most people, they're wondering about the priorities and how you set your priorities, and here, there, but, you know, by taking all those calls, trying to sort them out, and trying to, you know, set up the priorities of how we, which ones are more, you know, the public safety issues when it comes down to, you know, main lines and trying to keep the public safe. So, we sort them out, we prioritize them, and then we send the crew out, so it took a little bit of time to do that. Yeah. And also, you're going to realize that, you know, we still, based on, you know, the, Colleen has a good term for it, we're still chiseling on the rocks trying to pick up, you know, to sort the outages and get the customer calls. So, our new outage management system, I've got good news for you, it's going to be implemented, actually going into operation by April 16th. So, in about a month, we're going to have a new automated system that automatically, when the customers, they're going out, it's going to be mapped, and then we're going to have a list, and the list that, you know, right now, everybody picks up their phone, and basically we put them down and try to sort them out. That list is going to be provided for us in a matter of seconds. So, we have them, and then we can quickly send the customer, send the crews out to pick up the customers.
Just, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, are you saying you'll know when customers are out before they call you?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
That's right. There are two steps into that. Number one is the knowing, you know, how many customers there are out and where those outages are located. And we have a, actually, there is an option in the OMS outage management system to survey it, it's called Customer Portal, which means customers, they can go, even you can, you know, bring the app on your mobile phone, and then you can see the area that, you know, it's out, and it's going to give you the estimated restoration time. So, that's one way to reach out to the customers. But the, the second part of that, that's IVR, and that's, you know, with the IVR, that's a customer notification process, which once the meters, they're going out, and they're being mapped on the area map that shows the people are out, now we're sending the message to the customers that, you know, we know you're out, so you don't need to call us back. And that's coming up next year. So, by next year, this time, we should have the IVR.
Oh, that's great.
So.
Can you explain to them how you prioritize outages? Because we've got a lot of calls, and customers are like, where am I on the list?
Right.
And they wanted information. I think it would be helpful.
Sure. The priorities are basically the public safety. For instance, the main line, you know, if you have on the main street, you know, the poles are broken, or there's something happened to the line that, where the tree comes down or bringing the pole line, the line down, that's the absolute priority, because we have to have the backbone of the system energized in order to be able to restore the services to the side of the street and side roads. So, anything along the main drag, that's a priority, because there are lots of traffic. And when the pole comes down or the wires are coming down, you know, there is a huge public safety issue that, you know, could energize, energize, the wires basically that are coming down. So, that's the most important one. Then we get into the fires, and, you know, I know the people, they're getting excited when they see the top of the pole, you know, the transformer is on fire, but in reality, that transformer is de-energized, because as soon as the fault, you know, it happens, the fuse pops up. And, and, you know, once the fuse blows, you know, there is no danger really, even though if that, it was just a matter of time before we get, we get to that. We got overwhelmed because we got like about a list of 1,500, 1,500 areas that they were in trouble, whether the trees, they were coming down, or there was a fire, or the wires on the ground energized, or on the driveways, and the services cut out, and trying to get these and sort out. And Colleen used a very good example, it's like being the fire chief of four towns, you know, then, you know, you have fires all over, so which fire is more important than the other? So, you know, this is the type of decisions that you're going to have to make, making. But the main streets, main drag got the priority. Then we get to the side of the street, and then the side roads, and the services are going to be the last, because, you know, we can't put up your service if you, there is no power on your street. So, we have to bring those lines back in service before we can, you know, give you the power and the service. So, the people, if you see wires are down, please don't touch them, you know, we, we go investigate, and then, you know, if there is a danger, we cut them off, you know, if there is, still the street is live. Lots of those wired down calls that the people are worried about, you know, we found out that these are cable, you know, you know, Comcast or Rising cables. And, you know, there are no dangers on those, but don't assume that, you know, every wire that it's on your driveway or the street, it's a cable, because you have to be very approach with caution. Don't step over them, or over them, or don't try to pick them up, lift them, and throw them on the side of the road. That's dangerous. So, we have, and we have, like what I said, limited staff. Once the calls, they're coming in, we have to sort them out, and then we have to investigate every single one of them, believe it or not. So, we have runners that they go out on the streets in your neighborhood, you see them going on, to see that, you know, what is the problem? Is it the tree? Is it the pole that got hit? Or maybe the wires are wrapped up, or the tree, whatever the issue is. So, once we identify those and they're being reported back to the dispatchers, then we dispatch the crews and send the crews out. This is a lengthy process for us now, which, you know, it's taking, consuming lots of our time, which during the normal, you know, I would call it, no storm is normal, but, you know, when the less disastrous, like the one that we had before, this usually doesn't take that long, you know, because we don't have that many customers out. It could happen anywhere between, you know, a half an hour to 45 minutes. And then the crews are out, and you're back within an hour or two. But during this one, it was really overwhelming. I mean, we had lots, lots, lots of priorities. And my guys were logging over 1,500 calls that they all needed to be sorted out, some type of priority. And it was really stressful, but I'm glad that it was done safe, and hopefully next year that we're going to have IVR, as well as now, next month, actually by next month, we should be in much better shape, that, you know, at least, you know, we have all of those areas that we need to focus on and prioritize and send the people. We're still going to have to send people out for investigation to see what happened. That's going to be a lengthy process. But I don't want the people thinking that, you know, as soon as you call and you hung up, the truck is going to be at your neck, at your door. That's not going to happen. So, as much as we would love, love to do that, and if we have the resources, and we're one of the lucky communities, because we could get six mutual aid crews.
Yeah. How did, how did you get that? I would imagine they were in high demand. How did you get those crews, the extra crews?
Well, Colleen and I, we know many, many, you know, communities. We belong fortunately to NEPA that, you know, well, once you activate it, every, anybody can activate it, but depending on their availability and what they, what they can provide. But sometimes a little bit reinforcement, you know, it would help, too.
Yeah. Yeah. Just, just one, one item. NEPA is Northeast Public Power, Public Power Association. So, go ahead, Colleen.
Mutual aid crews we got were from Holy Oaks Sterling. They, they didn't get hit like us. So, even though it took us, took them a few hours to get here, they didn't have the damage they, you know, they were all good out there.
Right. But, but in hindsight, too, when they had the major ice storm out there, we sent crews out to that area to help them out. Yeah.
Amin, so we, we've talked in other meetings about the significant capital expenditures that RMLD is making, probably more than would be normal due to historical reasons. How much of that gets utilized to prevent these sorts of things? Some of it, you can't prevent a storm, but is, is a lot of the CapEx expenditures driving towards, you know, minimizing the damage or addressing the damage when it happens?
Actually, that's a very good point you brought up. That is correct. We've got lots, lots of maintenance to do. Actually, in my report, I'm going to go over them, you see them. The system is, you know, is not, you know, it's, right now, it's in a okay shape. However, we've got lots and lots of expenditures that we're going to have to do for maintenance. You know, we've got transformers that they aged, we've got lots of open wires that they need to be replaced and upgraded. We've got lots of connections, services, as well as, you know, the primary connections. We've got lots of, the, the infrastructure is old, you know, and we need to update those. And it costs money, and that's why you see that capital expenditures, you know, they, they've been going up for the past five years, and it's going to keep, continue going up for the next 10 or 15 years, because we're not out of the woods yet. Because, you know, nothing has happened so far, it doesn't mean the system is, you know, it's, it's okay for now, it's running. However, you know, due to the age, you don't know how long that's going to last. So, we've made lots and lots of improvements, and we've still got a lot that we need to do in order to make it stronger.
Yeah. You've laid out, you know, the CapEx projects over the next several years, which are impressive.
Yeah. The system hasn't been really maintained for over the past 15 to 20 years. And, you know, that's why we have to now spend some money in order to put the reinforcement into the system. You still need to build a new substation, desperately need it, new substation. And, you know, it's going to cost close anywhere between $7,000 to $11,000 million in Ballarat Vale area, because the station five is antiquated. I don't know how long this is going to last. I don't know whether it's going to last till next week, or your guess is as good as mine. We haven't been able to secure the land, you know, at least yet, but we have a, you know, prospect for it. But, you know, the work, it's in the works, it's in the process. We're trying to negotiate to secure the land, but this is what happens. I mean, if that transformer goes, you know, it could cost you anywhere between $150,000 to $200,000 a month to rent the equipment, and that's one of the biggest.
But it's clear, I mean, even the few years that have been on this pathway.
The reliability has been getting better, because, you know, we have spent some of that money to put the reinforcement into the system, make it stronger reliability-wise, but this is, you're only at the beginning of the road. This is only, you know, maybe 10%, not even, you know. But every year, as we're making these expenditures and we spend more money, the system is getting better and better and better. But we've got a plan, we've got a 20, we've got a 30-year plan that, you know, maintenance, that we, every year, we know exactly what we should do. Obviously, we can't spend it all in one year or two years, it's impossible, but we've got a 30-year plan that, you know, every year, for every fiscal year, you're going to see how much we need in every, for every maintenance plan, transformers, switches, wires, secondary services, substations, and all of these are laid out and scheduled. And I'm just giving you, warming you up for, you know, what's coming for the budget, you see that?
Yeah.
You're not going to think that, you know, I've got two heads and one.
Any other comments or questions from the Commission?
Great job.
Thank you.
Only one thing.
This is showing just the Twitter follow-ups, you know, for the first storm, we got like This is showing just the Twitter follow-ups, you know, for the first storm, we got like hundred eighty, we gained hundred eighty-seven, and brought it up to one thousand six hundred twenty-four. The second storm, six hundred more, seven more people they joined. The third storm, thirty more, and now we got two thousand two hundred forty-nine followers, which we strongly recommend people to join and, you know, follow up, because we keep up, you know, keep people updated about the outage restoration period, estimated restoration time through tweeting. Every area outage is being tweeted right now, but, but by next year, you know, you're gonna see messages being dispatched, going to your phones, or, you know, your emails or phone calls, so the people they know, they can hear exactly, you know, they can be notified by one of those means.
Yeah, I do, I have one more question. Ameed, I know, I saw you leave with your suitcase after, like, the, two days after the storm was over, so I know you probably slept here at least one night.
And I'm still married. That's a good part about it.
My, my question is...
I proudly do that. I'm proud of my job, I mean, you know.
That's good, at least she's listening.
Yeah, love you. That's for all of already, that's right. That's for all of my customers, I love you all.
Asking about the rest of the staff. How do you manage, I imagine you wanna have them out there as much as you can when you're in the heart of a storm like that. How do you manage rest and making sure that the guys are fresh and...
We have a safety policy that, you know, we're sixteen hours on and six hours off. So, if the crews are working sixteen hours, they need to come back and they rest. The rest period could be either in the office, or they could go home and rest. But, you know, when the, during the storm, when you have, you know, so much activity going on and the roads are not safe, we're keeping them in-house. We got mutual agreement with, you know, with the mutual aid, that we have to provide them, you know, some, we can't accommodate everybody over here. So, we accommodate them in the hotels and, you know, nearby hotels.
Right.
For mutual aid. And most crews, they stay over here.
So, they can work up to sixteen hours a day?
Work up to sixteen hours, then they, we put them down for six hours. And that's why we have contracting crews, that, you know, they could work while the people are rested over here, and we rotate them. So, but during the passage storm, I mean, it was overwhelming. I mean, yeah, we tried to do that, maybe stretch it a little bit to, between sixteen, seventeen hours, you know, but they got the rest.
Yeah, good, okay. Thanks.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just to echo earlier comments by the selectmen and others, congratulations to Colleen, to you and your staff, and just, you know, particularly Press Joyce, you did a great job of sending your communications, that's really helpful to kinda, you know, it's sort of, it's like watching the stock market, you know, the autographs go up. Going down is a happy feeling, it's a little bit reversed, but thank you, that's really helpful to kinda know just how, how things are going.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, go back.
Very quickly, again, thank you for letting me attend the APPA legislative rally in Washington DC. Jane and I went this year. It provides an opportunity for municipals to appeal to their representing leaders. Jane and I met with Senator Warren's office, and Congressman Moulton, and Capuano. This year's appeal addressed short and long-term planning for capacity, transmission, and fuel in this area. Capacity is an ISO market traded, as I've mentioned in the past. However, capacity is a necessity, and should be part of an overall plan to include location and size. In addition, there's no short and long-term plan for fuel. The winters around here are very difficult to get natural gas here, compounded with frozen harbors, to permit tankers coming in with oil, while no one wants a pipeline in their backyard, and the Joneses Act prevents non-American ships from transporting fuel like liquid natural gas that is very, very inexpensive from down south. We've seen severe fuel issues during this winter, especially during this last cold snap that we had at the beginning of the winter. Rain Tree, for example, who has a generating station, came within two days of a major brownout, because their fuel of oil was not able to come into the Boston Harbor, because they were frozen.
Wow.
So, we want our leaders to help address these concerns with the ISO. We feel that, you know, it, it, you know, we do our part at the end of the pipeline, but the capacity and transmission that's, that's being built and coming at us, we don't really have a lot of say in that. So, it's important for us to speak on behalf of public power down there, because a lot of times we get swooped up into the IOUs and, and, and we're different, you know what I mean? And we wanna, we wanna have a voice. So, I think it was successful. We have to keep the topics very short, you know, because you want them to remember what you're saying, so it's usually one, one strong message. So, we'll keep you updated on that. So, thanks again for letting us go, and Jane, it was very educational for Jane as well.
Yeah, that's great.
So, that's what I have on that. The next thing, if there's no questions, I'll go right on to the organizational study.
Right, right. Now, in the agenda, we, we've listed the reliabilities report too. I understand due to the storm that we will not, that report is not ready for us tonight, so it's only gonna be the organizational report, so, Colleen.
He usually gives that one. So, for the organizational study, as you remember, there's a significant amount of recommendations made by Lidos, and instead of going through, you know, the list that we've gone through on a number of quarters, and the same thing I did with the cab, we're down to just a handful of things that either have not, are not ongoing being addressed, meaning they are things that you, once you address them, you do them forever. So, the majority of them have either been addressed and they're ongoing, or they're completed. So, we've gotten a significant amount done. Some of the things that have not been, which I will report on, but we have addressed them, is the assessing the organizational culture and employee, we're, we're hoping to do that in the fall of this year, which Joyce is gonna help us out for internal surveys, and then another one is customer satisfaction would be external surveys. We didn't do it, we, you know, we had union contracts that were at the beginning of the year, and we wanted to get that out of the way. Everyone's going through their career development process, so everything's starting to settle down, probably a good time to both, do both internal and external surveying. The second one, really, that's left on the list is the asset management and work order management system, and we've had a couple of vendors come in. Wendy's got that in the budget for next year, and that's really gonna help us, because, again, the asset and the work order management is more chiseling on a rock, and so we're very excited to move forward with that technology, where, you know, we'll be able to, it'll make accounting a lot more efficient, it'll make time cards more efficient, everything will, is, is pulled into the asset and work, work order management system, and I think it will be a, a great improvement. So, that's all I have to report, thank you.
Yeah, Colleen, to comment a question, one is, some of us on the board, Dave Hennessy, I'd say particularly, maybe others, myself have some experience in this survey piece, so at the right time, if you were Jane, would like some thoughts around, anything to do with that, I'd be happy to.
No, that would be great, that would be really good, thank you.
You're welcome. And then the other question that I had is, was it to do with, and if it's not now, and Wendy does the financials, I was curious, when we review the financials, I know you have, it reminded me of the organization report, we have head count that we are targeting to hire as part of the organizational study, you have other head count that doesn't get replaced like a way, right away, like every company. So, I guess really my question is, are we, in terms of your optimum of workforce here, how many head counts still need to be filled, and is the cost of those reflected in our financials? I would think not, because they're not been expended, but I don't know if you have some other way of capturing them.
We, we have, the vacancies are captured in our, in our financials.
Yeah.
In the budget, yeah.
What is that, sort of like an accrued liability of some sort, or?
No, we just, we just put it in.
Wendy, come up, come up and speak at the microphone.
Yeah, they're in your, they're in the budget, but they're not, they're not...
Come up to the microphone so the cable, so the RCTV's can hear, knows what we're saying.
So, as you know, currently, we're working on the, the budget to finalize for the end of the month, and that's when we come up with a total that we feel as though are vacant positions in every department.
Right.
So, year to year, it changes based on how many people we've hired and how many have retired. So, in the budget, those numbers are reflected, but we also have to bring in crews, outside crews, in order to fill those vacancies while we don't have the talent in-house. So, as much as the budget reflects the numbers, the actual numbers are also reflective of how much money we have to actually pay those outside crews.
Is it pretty much a wash, is that what you're saying?
I mean, I don't know if it's, I don't, I wouldn't say it's a wash, because we're still not getting the full value of an actual, you know, in-house person, but, you know, and when you may...
Or benefit factor, so it may be.
Right, you may actually pay more.
The reason I'm asking is, is make sure we understand what, what our total real expenses are, but at least you're covering that.
Yes.
And what is the, what's the head count still to be filled, would you say, Colleen?
I think the head count's probably like around seventy-three right now.
Yeah, but where is it from target? What's the target?
I'm not, I'm not positive, like I said, we're looking at that right now for the budget.
Historically, it's gone all the way up to eighty-five. I'm a little hesitant to give a number, because we did the, the high-level organizational study, and we're going through each department now, and it's at a, more of a granular level, like we, we just finished up IT. And so what happens is, when someone retires, we may not replace them with the exact job description, because as...
That's good.
As we're, you know, moving forward, we're looking at succession, we're looking at, you know, what does the company need now, not what did the company need before.
Right.
So, we're always looking ahead. So, you know, we, we tag the position, but when we're doing the granular, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
So, you know, it's probably about seven or eight vacancies at this point right now, but, like I said, we're, we have three more divisions to look at, at a lower level.
Good.
Okay?
I'm good, thank you.
All set?
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, very good. You all set, Colleen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so Jane, you're up next.
Thank you, I'm here to report on January's purchase power. So, as Colleen had mentioned, and we discussed this when we went down to DC, January, the first week and a half of January was an extremely cold period of time. The ISO had a lack of gasoline, natural gas, excuse me, which caused a lot of our oil units to run. Our Stony Brook plant in, in Ludlow, Massachusetts, just to give you a snapshot, last year, the unit, our, our fuel cost for that particular unit was less than ten thousand dollars. This year, our fuel cost for the Stony Brook plant was in excess of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Oh, wow.
So, the oil within that particular unit was running at, for the intermediate, about a hundred and twenty-nine dollars per megawatt hour, and the peaking unit was just under two hundred dollars per megawatt hour. So, this looked at heating degree days, and if you can see from the bar chart, twenty-eighteen was significantly colder than twenty-sixteen and both twenty-seventeen. We, we, our kilowatt hour sales in twenty-eighteen amounted to a little over fifty-eight point two million, and that compares to twenty-seventeen of fifty-six million, and twenty-sixteen, which was very mild, at forty-eight million. So, it was significantly colder, people used more energy, hence their electricity bills were a little higher. If we look at this, however, it's kind of interesting, our fuel charge was significantly lower, and that's because, based on historical, we, you're not predicting this cold snap, because it's very abnormal conditions. If we looked at the average of those two, you'd probably get something right in between that. So, our fuel, we ended up using more of our deferred fuel cash reserve, which allows us to flatten the curve to our customers. So, they aren't, they're not seeing price spikes for that. We had anticipated taking about six hundred thousand out of the deferred fuel, and in January, we took about one point three million out of there. So, that's allowing us to, and again, we'll replenish that, but that's what we use to, to help us smooth through these, these...
So, the fund is acting as a buffer for all of our ratepayers?
Correct, exactly. This is a snapshot of, of the ISO markets, and as you can see, the blue one, this is the day-ahead market. So, the ISO has a day-ahead in a real time. So, the day-ahead is a financial settlement, and real time is what actually happens. So, this looks, if you look at the blue, that was twenty-seventeen, and it was relatively uneventful. You know, prices were, came up a little higher than fifty dollars, but they were pretty much below fifty for the entire month. When we look at the red line and compare twenty-eighteen, it's all over the place. It's consistently higher, it exceeded costs of over two hundred dollars per megawatt hour, and it was, and it was consistently higher. So, that is reflective also in our overall power supply, power supply costs for the month of January. This is the real time, which is what really happens, and again, on those, those very first week of January, when that cold snap was hitting us, prices were just below three hundred dollars per megawatt hour. They did come down, but they remained relatively high over the course of the month, you know, on one fifty, and then it tapered down as the weather got warmer towards the end of the month. So, again, this goes through purchase power, it's reflective in the fuel. I did mention the Stony Brook plant ran, but costs have come down in February and March, and you'll see that in the next couple of monthly reports that we provide. I think that's it.
I have a quick question for Jane.
Sure.
Jane, how many, what percentage of, of our ratepayers have electric heat?
It's a small percentage. I don't, I, I can get that number for you?
No, I don't need it, I just, I'm curious why there's such a big spike.
It's probably less than, it's less than ten percent.
Yeah, so why is there such a big spike for kilowatt hours?
Because, because, again, when it's cold outside, your furnaces are running, furnaces have motors and fans, all that stuff is adding to people's usage.
Yeah, right.
It's kicking on more, because it's so cold, it has to run a little harder. So, it's not necessarily relate, people are home more, because they don't wanna go out, so they, I mean, it's a good thing for us, because they're using more electricity. It's just difficult when prices are so volatile.
Yeah.
Well, this incorporates commercial customers as well, right?
Correct, exactly.
So, commercial customers face the same thing.
They turn on space heaters, too, right?
Correct, a lot of offices, you know, they can't regulate the temperature, so, you know, they have employees with the space heaters, so again, that increases the usage.
Yeah, thank you.
Great question. Thank you.
All right, we're all set? Okay. Wendy, you're next.
Okay, tonight, I'm reporting on the financials for January thirty-first, for the first seven months of the fiscal year eighteen. So, if you just look at the balance sheet, just a quick snapshot in, in my, my own words here of what's happening. So, as you can see, unrestricted cash really hasn't increased that much, it's only about two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and the restricted cash is up about six million, but that's mostly due to the pension trust that's been added on the books at FY seventeen. Then the receivables are up one point six million from last year, and currently, we are at ninety-four percent current receivables in-house, so we're doing a good job collecting. And then if you look at the capital assets, we're about increase of three point seven million from prior year, but our accounts, our accounts payable are up two million as well.
Wendy, before you jump off that page, can you explain the, the operating fund as to what, what the, the theory behind the op, we're using the balances of the operating fund? You have so many months.
Yes, I actually have a whole slide on that today.
Picture presentation, Colleen?
Okay.
Okay, all right.
If you want me to go into that right now, I can.
No, no, that's, you wanted to go into that now, or you want...
No, I had, so, two quick questions, Wendy. So, what, obviously, restricted cash is restricted, but what can it be used for practically, anything other than intended use, or...
I mean, there are, just quickly...
Why don't you jump to that presentation, since we asked you?
Before we, the, the other question, then, will be off, my questions on this page, the receivables went up, sales are pretty much flat, right? Maybe I've thought this through, so what...
It just could be, literally could be timing.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we never can be positive about when the billing, the, the amount of days in the billing cycle, you know what I'm saying?
I also believe at this time of year, we're not allowed to turn anybody off, I believe?
No, we're still in moratorium.
We're still in the moratorium, so, you don't wanna pay your bill, you can't get turned off.
But we are collecting ninety-four percent current, so we're, we're in pretty good shape.
All right, yeah.
The moratorium expires next month.
Yes.
Good, yes. So, those, so beware.
I will answer, I will answer your question, Tom. If you turn to the second page, that's our schedule of cash, unrestricted and restricted. So, quickly counting, you have about twelve restricted cash funds. So, you have to use the cash for exactly what it, what it says there, so we know our depreciation and construction is for our capital projects. Your deferred fuel is to level off the fuel, the, the expense and the, what we bill out our customers monthly. The rate stabilization fund is for any kind of situation where we would need to drastically increase our customer rates, and we wouldn't wanna, we wouldn't wanna pass off that burden to the customers, we would dip into that fund if we needed to. But the rate stabilization fund could also be used in a case where we would need to... But the rate stabilization fund could also be used in a case where, uh, we would need to, um, put some capital infrastructure out in the field, and we don't have the funds to do it.
Yeah.
And, uh, if we felt as though that was the right strategic plan at the moment, we could go that, in that direction.
Yeah, good, thank you.
And then the rest of it, of course, the pension trust, and then you have your, uh, sick leave buyback.
Yep.
And then a few small things like energy conservation and our customer deposits, of course, we cannot touch those.
Got it, thank you.
So that clarifies the restricted part.
Yep, perfect, thank you.
Okay?
Do you want to address the operating while you're here on this page?
The operating, sure.
Yeah.
Jane, if you wouldn't mind. The first slide, okay. So if you look at the first slide here, what I presented today, addresses exactly your question, Phil. The yellow bars show the operating cash at the end of the year, from FY fourteen to FY seventeen, so those are actual figures. And then what I've put, uh, FY eighteen to FY twenty-three are what we're, we're budgeting, so what we're projecting to come in at. And then the purple bar shows the average monthly expense. So what I mean by average monthly expense is if you take your total operating expenses for the year, you divide that by twelve, and you get a monthly, uh, a monthly average, okay? So, we're looking for, basically, how many months of operating expenses are we holding in our operating cash? Because that's kind of a benchmark for any financial professional to, to say how we're doing. And I've kind of been on Colleen with this, uh, to, to kind of come up with an area where we feel comfortable. Okay, so that's why I did this graph for you tonight. So if you look at, uh, FY fourteen, we start climbing with our operating cash because we're trying to build it up to where we feel comfortable in order to fund our capital projects coming up, okay? So then, as you look at going down, as we're projecting, our operating expenses to our operating cash goes from about two months, and then you're going down into about one and a half month supply of operating expenses. And I, and I know some individuals, uh, like Mr. Stempak, may think that, uh, three months is very conservative. But when you're dealing with, you know, uh, ratepayers' money, and, um, you know, it's, it's not the same as a regular business. You want to make sure that you're not being un- irresponsible with ratepayers' funds. So that's why I think it's important to have enough money. Three months is a little too conservative. I like to stay on the two-month side personally, um, but it's important to have enough money in case something comes up so that we do not have to pass off the burden to our customers. Okay, does that explain it, Phil?
And I agree with you, I mean, I, I mean, that's how we've gotten to, uh, be here for over a hundred years, right?
Exactly.
Because we're a conservative organization, and, and that's very important to have.
Right, and we're being responsible with our, with our cash, and, um, so-
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, not that we're panicked by any means, but with revenues flattening-
Yes.
You know, that creates other potential needs for cash, right?
Right, exactly.
We may not have had, so it's provides some security.
Right. But as Colleen has mentioned also, uh, of course, you do have, like I also just mentioned, we do have the rate stabilization in the, in a case where it, you know, power supply goes out of our control, the costs go way up, and we, you know, we don't want to pass that off to our customers. And also in the need of, um, capital, um, in, in the need to put infrastructure in the field that we don't have the cash for, if it came to that point. So we could draw on the rate stabilization fund for that.
Well, it's, it's an excellent way to handle the volatility of our business, right? Because you just don't know what's going to happen month to month or year to year, as your, your heating days showed, I mean, it could-
Right.
Be a huge difference.
So I'll, I'll move right into the second slide. To kind of, you know-
So I should say, no, no, no company that I know of went out of business because they kept too much cash.
Exactly.
I don't think it-
But it, but it, you know, it all, it, it, it appears that we have too much, but when you look at the numbers, we don't. We're just being responsible, is what we're doing. So the second slide, um, the green bar shows the net income, and FY fourteen to FY seventeen are actual numbers. And FY eighteen to twenty-three, sorry, I didn't change the title, twenty-three are projected. And what the blue bar shows are our capital projects, what's, at, what we've actually spent and what we're projected to spend. And then you have your yellow, your yellow line there that shows our rate of return, what we've actually come in at and what we're targeting. So what, the real, what you take out of this graph really is if you look at our net income, the green bar, and you look at the blue bar, we're always taking the money that we, we get from our net income and reinvesting it. Right, that's, that really tells a, a story right there. We're consistently reinvesting our money into our capital infrastructure. Because as Hamid points out in his presentation, and as Colleen tells you, you know, the system's been, uh, not maintained, uh, the way it should be necessarily, but we're getting it up to speed, and we're continuously, uh, moving forward to make sure that we have a reliable system at all times, especially in a time of a storm. Where everybody appreciates that. So I think that really tells a pic, tells a story right there.
And, and I think we just need to reinforce that this is a very, very technical reason. I mean, we, you know, you, you can't just sort of look at the numbers and make, uh, assumptions. You need to know what's in the system, you need to be an electrical engineer, you need to know what works. When you go past the twenty-five year, uh, on the transformers, for example, and you expect them to work out to fifty years, and it doesn't happen. And I think the storms are a perfect example of what, what can happen. And, you know, losing your internet is an annoyance, as we say, but when you lose your electricity, it's, it's life-threatening.
And of course, we don't have full control over everything, but-
Right.
We want to make sure our infrastructure is solid. Okay. So that's all I have for graphs tonight, I thought they were pretty, um, pretty helpful, especially since we, what we've been talking about. But I just want to, uh, point out the, the capital funds, um, page, so that's the third page. It shows where we, where we get our money to fund our capital projects. And, um, we got about eight point six million dollars this year to fund our capital projects, of which three point five has been spent already. So we have a little over five million left, um, and, and we do have, and Hamid will talk to you about this, we do have capital projects still coming down the line, uh, to finish off FY eighteen. And then if we look at our, um, our revenue and our operating and maintenance expenses as compared to the budget, which is the final, um, the final financial on the packet. So, currently, um, in talking with Jane and her group, we're about five hundred and ten thousand dollars under budget for collecting on our base revenue, which is about almost two percent down currently. And then, um, we have under-collected approximately one point eight million dollars in power expenses, which you know, we try to recoup month to month. And then just looking at the budget overall, uh, we should have about forty-one point six percent remaining, which is, uh, five months left of the year. And our operating and maintenance expenses are, um, continuously under budget. Who knows what the storm is going to bring? But as of January thirty-first, we are under budget, um, in our operating and maintenance expenses. And some of that could be because, um, we have some vacancies, just so you know. But it's, it's, it's a good outlook right now, except the, um, of course, we're down on our revenue.
Uh, Wendy, I'm sorry, what-
Yes.
What slide shows the revenue decline, I'm not sure if I'm in the-
I'm sorry, the, it's, it's the, the final financial, financial, the one that says, uh, statement of budgeted revenues, expenses, and changes.
Yep.
So, you, you, you don't actually see it, but I just know the numbers behind the scenes, just telling you from looking at the actual year-to-date based on the budget, we're about five hundred and ten thousand dollars under budget on our base revenue.
And you, you approximate that at two percent?
Almost two percent, yes.
Okay. But Wendy, uh, these are terrific, uh, displays, just, uh, on the, uh, just because I, I know we're still figuring out the room, but on the, uh, the PowerPoint slides, um, in the future meetings, if you have a copy of those, could we get a copy of those?
Yes, I apologize.
It would be good, it's good stuff, and I would, especially the one you talked about in the operating profit, but-
Let me send that to you on an email, how about that?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, why don't you send it to all the commissioners?
Yes.
You know, the room is not-
I know, I'm sorry.
But that's fine, it's, they're, they're good, they're good displays.
I think you should share that with all the commissioners.
I would love, I will, I will definitely send it to you.
Wendy, do you have an estimate, or maybe it's Colleen, about how much the storm costs? Is there, do you have a sense of that, is that-
We are still working on payroll for last week.
Okay.
We haven't even gotten to the payroll for this week.
Okay.
So, at, at this moment-
Any wild guesses, Colleen or Wendy? No?
A lot.
I'm just, I'm just curious.
A lot.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to understand-
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
You have to understand, the guys worked around the clock for, and, and the mutual aid for about five days straight.
Right, and we pay for them, and we pay for their expenses and hotels and everything, so, hundreds of thousands.
Definitely.
Thanks.
Anything else?
All right.
Good, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, Hamid, you back up again?
New material, please.
I feel talk to, talk to his wife again on TV.
Well, I'm here to report the month of January expenditures for, in, in CHN operations. Uh, the first slide, you see all the capital improvement projects, these are the ones that, you know, uh, they be, you approved in the budget for, for this year, for this fiscal year that ends June thirtieth. Uh, the next slide basically showing you the non-capital, uh, the capital authorization project that they're not basically the, uh, project, but with, it's, it's still, uh, you know, expenditures, like pole settings, overhead, and, and the ground, uh, wire upgrades, and hazmat, and porcelain cutouts, and all of those. For the month of January, we spent hundred thirty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars. That brings the year-to-date to eight hundred five thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars. So we're making steady progress on those. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, the last time, uh, most of our projects, they, they're big-ticket items, that they're, they're happening now, between now to June. At Station Three, and you know, some of the upgrades of the thirty-five KV lines, and as well as, uh, some restructuring of the, uh, one fifteen KV, uh, system. So the next slide shows the IRD and IT, uh, and facilities, how much they spent in the month of, uh, January, and the, the remaining balance, you see on the far right. All in all, uh, in the month of January, January, all departments, we spent seven hundred fifty-six thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars. That brings, uh, the year-to-date to three million, three, uh, three million four hundred ninety-three thousand five hundred twenty dollars. And, uh, we got, uh, four million dollars almost, to spend, four point two million dollars to spend for the remaining of the year that I'm going to spend it. That's the good news.
That's good.
So what will the, what will the fiscal year spend be total?
The eight million, uh, the budget fiscal year, it was budgeted seven, uh, seven million six hundred eighty-five thousand and five hundred twenty-one dollars. So the remaining is four million, so for three point five million, almost, we, uh, we've spent.
Uh, Hamid, uh-
Yes.
And I just want, maybe Wendy to jump in too, or Colleen, so, is it, is it, are we covering, uh, CapEx from both the operating profit and also from depreciation, is that what we're doing? If you look at the ANL, it looks like we're taking about three million out of operating-
We're taking, we're taking money from last year's, uh, net income, and, and you bring it over. And then, of course, you have the depreciation expense, three percent, that is restricted for capital funds.
What is that, is that about three million, or?
No, it's about four point three million.
Okay, so the seven, so three million is coming from operating profit, and there's another four point something coming from-
That is correct.
Which is typ- uh, normal depreciation kind of approach. Okay, good.
Right. So it's fully funded.
Yep.
The next slide shows you the routine maintenance, these are the programs that, you know, we were talking about, how much maintenance the system requires. So, uh, transformers, transformer replacement, pole inspection, quarter inspection of the feeders, manhole inspection, porcelain cutout, so we're making great prog- progress on those. And as we're upgrading those equipment and extending the life, uh, we should going to go back to the capital and, uh, to the, uh, net plant increase. Uh, the next slide shows the tree trimming, substation maintenance, and underground subdivisions. We're making-
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm guessing that the, uh, the relatively smaller number of, uh, outages in our aggressive tree trimming are connected in some way?
Yes.
We hadn't trimmed as well.
It is, but we still had during the past storm lots of tree issues, and these are, you know-
Oh, yeah, not to, I'm just saying, had we done less, uh-
That's right, we made a great progress on those, you're going to see in the last slide that, you know, over the past five years, averaged the tree trimming, it shows less and less tree-related issues we have. So that shows improvement. And, yeah, it's a great program, it's, it's working, and, uh, it's getting better and better. However, we still-
Polls is the same story, too.
Unfortunately, we still can't control, you know, during the storm, like, lots of pine trees, and most of these pine trees that, you know, we had trouble with, uh, during the, during the past storm. And, you know, you can't, we had some, uh, some pine trees that, from across the street, they landed in the wires and, on our wires, the other side of the street.
They're usually very tall.
And, yeah, that's why, these tall pine trees, shallow roots, you know, causing trouble. So, the tree trimming, we did seventy-one span month of January, and year-to-date, seven hundred twenty-eight, uh, span through the December. Substation maintenance, uh, we infrared scanned the, the station equipment, and so far, we haven't had, uh, any hot spot or issues that needed to be addressed. The underground subdivision upgrade, this is huge, this is one of those really old antiquated, uh, facilities that, you know, underground facilities, that we're trying to take care of, and, you know, take care of, and we've been doing, trying to pick, you know, the worst ones, prioritize them by the age. And we've been doing so many a year, now we're getting a little bit more aggressive, and you see that as part of the proposal for the FY nineteen budget. Uh, so recently, we com- completed Crestwood Estate in North Reading, Aspen Road in North Reading, and Long Hill Lane. These are the ones that, you know, we replaced everything, the underground, the transformers, connections, everything, it's really rebuilt. And we got the number of other comm- uh, uh, subdivisions that are in progress. Shasta Drive, Westover Drive, Greenbrier Drive, uh, Great Neck Drive, Gandalf Estate, Deerfield, and Cherokee Lane in Wilmington. So they're all over, Wilmington, North Reading, and, and, you know, you got subdivisions that they go up, the ages are almost fifty years.
And Hamid, are, are we using our own crews to do that?
We both, we're using, yes, uh, Colin and I, we, we, what we did, we trained our crews for underground, uh, the splices and underground, uh, construction. So, uh, they now, they're fully confident that they can do that job, and then, not a problem, however, because we got limited crews, we still need to augment them by, by the contractors. Because it's overwhelming, I mean, all of these communities that, you know, we need to do, all of, you touch one, uh, transformer, all of a sudden, you know, you can't just leave the area where they're doing, then one next over, and then one next over, because they're all the same vintage. And then the cable, you know, is old, so you have to do that, uh, we have only limited crews that they can do that. So, we have to definitely use contractors for the next ten, fifteen years. It's, it's inevitable, you know?
Thank you.
You're welcome, you got a question, Tom?
Yeah, actually, I was, I was wondering, and maybe not yet because of more investments I know you guys are making, but do we have any, uh, you know, some companies have like a risk assessment model where they'll go in and say, okay, we know this substation is at risk, and it's going to cost seven million, so that'll go on the, on the chart with a degree of probability, and so you, it, it sort of helps you understand how much capital and reserves you might need, because not, not, not all of it's going to happen, but something, or some of it will, so I-
Right.
I'm just wondering if, you seem to be aware of a lot of those, but I'm wonder if any of it's been memorialized into that kind of thing, or if that's even valuable? Because it sounds like, you know, if you captured it all, there's probably tens of millions of dollars that could happen, or maybe some small percentage of that will happen, and, and, you know, as commissioners and as staff, we want to make sure we've got money in the, in the budgets to at least prepare for that.
Actually, what we've had, I showed Colleen the other day, that, you know, we got like all of those seven maintenance programs.
Yeah.
We got them listed, all the, now that we did GIS now, it's completed, we can get even better dat- data, more-
Yeah.
Better planning, put it this way. We have for every one of those c- uh, maintenance programs, we got, we have, uh, prioritized them based on the age and the, the, the equipment durability. Uh, you know, like transformers, not more than twenty-five years, and, you know, these subdivisions underground, basically, it's made anywhere between two, twenty to thirty years.
Yeah.
But, you know, we have prioritized them up to, believe it or not, I won't be here by FY thirty, thirty-five.
Phil will be, he can-
Hopefully, well, you're going to see that, you know, that's, and even we forecasted how much, you know, with the escalating cost of the construction, how much would it cost? So we have a good estimate of, you know, how much we need to spend, and that's how we pre- present our budget.
I guess the question is, that's perfect, some percentage of that, maybe very small, are things that we really need to not only do, but might have to do on a very urgent basis, do you know what I mean? Because the equipment's so old, you know, that you might not get through the fiscal year, so-
Right.
I'm just wondering if the, you know, if that's something you look at, or?
Yeah, we, we look at everything, but-
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So we, we did the reliability, and they, consultant came in and looked, after Hamid did the assessment, then I did an assessment. And the GIS data gives you your ages, we work with the, the manufacturers of the equipment. We work with the, the manufacturers of the equipment. And as Hamed said, we have this planned out for thirty years. I mean, now, when you're looking at equipment, you can go in and assess it, but if, like for substation, for example, you would have to take the whole thing apart and there might be internal insulation problem.
Sure.
Okay? That from the outside, it look, you know, a consultant might say, well, that's probably going to last you ten years. But when then you start taking it apart and the insulation's gone, it's like, okay, do you, you're going to spend the money to fix the insulation? What do you do? And, and so the risk assessment becomes a lot more intrusive, I guess. And, and that's what Hamed and I have been trying to do. With, with these maintenance programs, we're really getting into the fine detail and training our own employees to be able to do that so that these assessments and risks can be put into that thirty-year plan. So I feel like we're doing that. I don't think that a consultant could do a better job than what we're doing. It would be...
Oh, no, no, it really is better done internally. I was just wondering, you know, if there's some percentage of that big thirty-year piece that you kind of know, boy, that has some of this, you can't look inside, but you know, if wires are hanging from somewhere, you know that that probably has to get...
Well, scheduling the equipment for maintenance and replacement, I think we've got it down. And then I told you recently, you work with an economist that verified that, that this amount of money we're spending, about eight million dollars a year, is appropriate for the age of the equipment, the size of this, uh, system, the territory. And so we're spot on. So no matter what angle we look at it to verify it so that I don't get caught saying something that isn't accurate, we've really been verifying it from every angle and it's just spot on every time. So I feel confident...
Spending the seven million is really...
Oh, it's, this is absolute minimum.
Yeah.
I did the analysis to see how much would it cost if we wanted ready to do all of the stuff that, you know, in a most expeditious manner, like squeeze them and then maybe into five to ten year. You'd be, you'd be spending anywhere close to twenty to twenty-five million dollars a year if you wanted to do that. But we know we don't have that money, we can't do that, and we're trying to spread it, you know, and prioritize them to the best we can so we can, you know, address all of those issues. And, you know, it's, uh, but the plan is there, there, and we've estimated how much would it cost and, you know, all of those. But some of those are happening, you know, especially in underground subdivisions, like some of those that you don't expect it to happen, you know, and all of a sudden you have problems that you have to get in there. Some utilities, what they do, they take a Band-Aid approach. They're going to say, okay, we're going to fix this one and then we get back to the next one when it happens. It's just a matter of time before the next one happens and mobilization, demobilization is going to cost you more money. So we're trying to plan it so it's a most cost-efficient way to do that. We get into the, get into that area, we fix them all, we get out. So that way, you know, it's done in one shot rather than in pieces that, you know, you're going to end up spending at least thirty percent more than what you, if you do it the first time, do it right. Does it make sense?
Absolutely. Good.
Any que, any other questions? Good, thanks. So the next one is basically, the next one, the double poles, you've seen this, you know, over and over again. The ownership of the poles are fifty-fifty with RMLD and Verizon. We've got approximately sixteen thousand poles. The custodial half in Reading and North Reading is with the RMLD. The rest in Reading and Lynnfield and Wilmington is with Verizon. The next one is my favorite slide. So it shows the engines, they're basically ball-in court. RMLD in the Lynnfield, we got seven transfers to do and two pole bots to remove. In North Reading, we got twelve transfers and thirty-five pole bots to remove. Reading, we got twenty-four transfers and fifty-nine pole bots to remove. And in Wilmington, you see thirty-two transfers and four pole bots to remove. Actually, this is showing, it might not look good, you know, with the double poles, but as I've always said that, and Jason could agree with me, I guess, what you do as you're setting these new poles, actually, you're upgrading the facilities with it. I mean, the old poles, they've taken out and new poles, they're going in and, you know, you're upgrading the constructions, you're adding to your plant value. So this is a good thing, I know, and, but it's going to take some time. This is always, it's a moving target. We can't just, you know, immediately remove the pole butt until everybody's transferred. And we have no control over Verizon and Comcast. As much as the people, they might be thinking that, you know, we've got connections and, you know, they listen to us, they got their own systems. So we do the best we can trying to take care, take care of those, but we don't have any control over their operations, especially they're cutting back forces too. So the next slide shows you the reliability, the health of the system. SAD, KAD and SAFE, they're all well under, uh, regional and, uh, national, basically, uh, baselines or comparing to the, uh, those averages for the national and regional averages.
And this takes into account the storm as well or is this...
Well, this one, well, yeah, there are two, the, the numbers, you know, when there's storms, they really throw these off.
Right, exactly.
It's like, you know, your blood pressure when you go to doctors, all of a sudden it's, you know, going up to a hundred eighty, two hundred, you know? But then during the normal time, it goes back to normal. So the major storms like that, we following the reli, reliability track, APPA guideline that would allow us to say that, you know, okay, these are exceptionals. So we take those out. And then, you know, we're taking the rest of the system, you know, that, you know, well, during the normal operations and you compare those with that. If you want to go with those, then the, the, the numbers that go in, the actual regional, national averages, the bar goes higher. And then, you know, it doesn't make any sense to show that, well, for one, it's spot, it's spike.
Sure, right, exactly.
Same as the fuel charges, you know, that, you know, it goes up, all of a sudden, doesn't mean it's going to stay up for always, it's fluctuating. So the same thing with the, with the storms, depending on severity of storms and, you know, it wouldn't be really fair to compare yourself against the community that, you know, they saw the storm, but they had less damages. And, you know, we had more, storm hit us more and we had more damages on our, in our systems. So to answer your questions, the major storms like that, they, they're not, they're taken out.
Sure, okay.
But the rest of them, you know, they're all in, every other single outages that, you know, daily it happens, they're included. So the last slide shows you the causes of outages, the blue lines, they show you bars, they show you basically the annual, uh, the average for, for the past five years, the averages. And the red li, bars, they show you where we are in, in two thousand eight with every single category. And with the trees, you see that, you know, the average we've had fifty-seven for the past five years and now so far, we are two. So, but, you know...
Hamed, under weather, so does that, the last three storms we've had, would they, wouldn't they be...
No, this is for the month of January. They reported for month, month of January. So it's only one month.
Yeah, no, I saw you had a date, but I didn't see it was...
Yeah, there is only one, one, there was no storm basically in January. But for the next report, February, and you're going to see that these numbers...
You might need a bigger chart.
Especially the fourth one coming up next week, right? We're watching that.
Right.
So, okay. Good. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you doing the procurement?
There we are.
Are you doing the procurement too?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Unless you don't need it.
Forgot totally about that.
Do, do I, do I hear the motion? Somebody want to make the motion?
Motion.
Yeah.
Mr. Stenpak.
Suggestion motion, move that proposal two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-seven for pole-mounted transformers be awarded to Wesco Distribution, Inc. for ninety-one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and Graybar Electric for nine thousand and forty dollars for a total of one hundred thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Wesco pursuant to MGL, uh, section one sixty-four, section fifty-six D on their recommendation of the general manager.
Okay, is that seconded? Then move to seconded. Hamed, you want to give us a setup?
Yes. We sent this to fourteen vendors or distribution companies. So we received the bid from four and the lowest responsible responsive bidder is where Wesco Distribution for ninety-one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and Graybar for nine thousand and forty dollars. These are overhead transformers as a part of the transformer replacement program. We go to bed every, you know, every quarter or six months, depending on the need, but they go on like, you know, flies, you know, they fly out of here. As soon as they come in, they just, you know, we put them up because as part of the transformer replacement program. So this is where it is. We budgeted, we have remaining in capital for two hundred twelve thousand, which hundred thousand dollars of that is this bid. So after this, there's hundred twelve thousand left. So we can spend.
Discussion, questions? If not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Do I have this, the second motion?
Sure. Move that proposal two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-nine for capacitor banks be awarded to Graybar Electric for twenty-four thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty cents pursuant to MGL one sixty-four, section fifty-six D on the recommendation of the general manager.
Is that seconded?
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Hamed again, please.
Sure, we sent the bid to sixteen vendors and we received actually two responses back, two of them that the responsible responsive bidder. These are the cap banks that we use in the system for, they do two jobs for us. Actually, they regulate, they, they, they regulate the voltage as well as minimizing the losses in the system. As we are doing the system expansions, we need to do that to, you know, reduce the losses, the line losses, as well as, you know, boosting the voltage in the areas that they need it. We go based on the engineering analysis. There's a, you know, complex analysis involved behind the scene to place them. So the Graybar was awarded for twenty, it's, it's to be awarded to be, for twenty-four thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty cents for those cap banks that, you know, we ordered. He was the lowest responsible responsive bidder. The next lowest was Wesco Distribution, but by not much, but we are recommending to award the bid to Graybar for that amount.
Okay. Discussion, questions? I see none. All in favor, please raise your right hand. I pose that motion carries five zero. Very good.
Thank you. This is also, the amount is part of that two hundred twelve, uh, two, two thousand, two hundred, two hundred thousand, two, twelve, uh, two, two... I can't do it right, right? Two hundred twelve thousand dollars, right? That's part of the two hundred twelve thousand dollars.
Okay.
Took what, three attempts or...
Change the number.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Now it's going to be remaining eighty thousand dollars always.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
And the blooper roll.
Do you want to say goodnight to them? Goodnight. Enough for tonight, right? Until the next one.
All right. Okay, so under general discussion, our next meeting is April the nineteenth of two thousand eighteen. That night, the first order of business would be the reorganization of the board. So we need to have that as the first order of business and if Tracy, you'll actually